Thank you. Moving on to citizens, communications and recognitions.
None submitted.
I believe we got recognitions?
Yes, we do. We have recognitions.
Recognitions.
Two proclamations.
Pro- two proclamations, so we'll get the council to join us up front or just probably not?
We can do it from here.
From there, stand in the background?
To maintain social distance.
Which one would you prefer?
Well, there's two, so I don't know which one I put first.
Alright, so public works first. Public works, we know is out there every day and, you know, they're the ones that are taking up trash and cleaning up the community and fixing streets and doing a lot of the work that is critical to the city. So, Mr. Sanlado, on behalf of the city council, I'd like to, you know, present you with this proclamation for public works. And I'll just read it as follows. Whereas the many services provided by the City of Eagle Pass Public Works Department to our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficiency, the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewer, streets, and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depend on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these services, as well as their planning, design, and construction of public facilities and utilities, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of the staff at Eagle Pass Public Works Department, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staffed public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. And whereas the City of Eagle Pass desires to honor the dedication and arduous work of all the employees of the City of Eagle Pass Public Works Department. Now therefore, I, Luis C. Ciquentas, Mayor of the City of Eagle Pass, do hereby proclaim the week of May seventeen to twenty-three, twenty-twenty, as Public Works Weeks. In the City of Eagle Pass, and I call upon all citizens and organizations to participate in all activities and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works department and to recognize the vital contributions they make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. In witness hereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Eagle Pass to be affixed this nineteenth day of May, twenty-twenty. That's it. Thank you for all the work. I know you guys, they're out there every day. I see the pride they take in serving the community, and for that, I'm truly grateful for it.
For the hard work they do, they're out there in the sun, like solid waste, pick it up in weekends and New Year's Day, and when you have to pick up, go ahead and pick up all the trash. Thank you.
Let's.
Thank you, Mr. Henry.
We can stagger a little bit. Thank you very much.
Is everybody coming up? Let's face that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and now to our emergency medical service providers, EMS. We know that when somebody needs help, medical, or sometimes just a cat on a tree, you know, EMS is out there being called out and there's... You can't put a number on the time that you sacrifice to serve the community. When you have to put in twenty-four, forty-eight hours straight, give up family time, give up birthdays, give up, you know, different activities with your family, there's no price that you can put on that. And that can only be achieved because it's within you and your heart to serve the community in that fashion. And so for that, you know, I think I can speak on behalf of the city council that we're really grateful that you have taken this responsibility of serving others' medical needs and being the first responders in most cases when somebody is in a medical crisis. So for that, Chief, we will present you this proclamation to you and of course, all the EMS crew that, that works day in, day out, twenty-four hours, you know, nonstop. So, I'll read it out loud. It says, "Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service in our community, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or voluntary, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas the City of Eagle Pass wishes to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, Luis C. Ciquentas, Mayor of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of May seventeen to the twenty-third, twenty-twenty, as Emergency Medical Services Week. In the City of Eagle Pass, and I urge my fellow citizens to join me in expressing our great appreciation and sincere congratulations to the Eagle Pass Fire Department EMS team for their outstanding dedication to the medical care of our community. In witness hereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Eagle Pass to be affixed this nineteenth day of May, twenty-twenty." Chief, thank you for all the work you do, for all the work the EMS, and of course, all your firefighters EMS team does each and every day.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Chief.
My too. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. I would like to mention that we, we are in the front lines. These are very dedicated people. I did bring my captain and the two lieutenants that are on shift right now today, but we've had a little bit of a scare once in a while, but these people continue to work, and it's not just the fire department. I would like to mention the private ambulance companies. I would like to mention the nine-one-one system. I would like to mention the hospital, the emergency rooms, the emergency doctors. These are the people that are on the front line risking their lives, and yet, every morning, I'm there to see them arrive and ready to work. And they know that at any moment, they could be risking their whole life and affecting a lot of people. So, yeah, this is for you guys.
Thank you, guys. If you'll be on this side, so we can be a little... Even that one, you guys showing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to ordinances. Item number one, consideration and possible approval of an ordinance, deleting section nineteen dash fifty-eight I three of chapter nineteen of the Code of Ordinance and adding a new section nineteen dash fifty-eight I three, adopting a charity care policy of EMS services, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Before we get started with the actual ordinance, I do want to give you a little bit of history as to why we need to make this change. So, the city is part of the Texas Ambulance Supplement Payment Program, which basically is a reimbursement from the federal government through the state government for communities that have high Medicare, Medicaid, and uninsured populations. So, this program is completely changing in the upcoming year. And so, what was happening previously is that it was based on a formula, based on the cost minus the revenue. So, basically, on the net cost. So, the formula would take, this is how much it costs to run EMS, minus how much money we made, and then there was a certain formula that was allocated to that, and they'd cut us a check for that amount. What's changing is that they're no longer going to base it on cost. Now, they're going to base it on what is termed a charity care. And charity care is basically the amount that we write off for the uninsured. And so, what's currently in policy... What's currently in policy is basically it states if an uninsured patient has been determined to be indigent by any agency within the county, then their fees can be waived. Unfortunately, this definition is not as black and white as it should be. And in order to qualify, we do need to make some changes. And so, what's being proposed is a waiver based on income. And so, if the income is at a hundred and twenty-five percent of the federal poverty line or lower, they'd be eligible for a hundred percent, a hundred and fifty percent of the federal poverty line, seventy-five percent, and so forth. And so, using this definition will now make us eligible for this so that we can continue with the program and continue getting that reimbursement from the federal government through the state.
Alright, can you give me an example where...
So, let's say...
Going higher when it's going...
You know what? I have a question. It almost looks like it should be the opposite of what the numbers contradict.
That's all I want.
The waiver to the poverty line. Does that make sense? Like, the twenty-five percent should be with someone that's one hundred and twenty-five percent below versus...
That's... Give us an example of what that would look like.
So, if, so let's say for a single, for a single person, the poverty line is about twelve thousand dollars. So, at a hundred and twenty-five percent, that's fifteen thousand dollars worth of income. So, if a person, you know, is uninsured, has to call an ambulance, their bill would be forgiven if they had less than fifteen thousand. And then, as the amount grows, so let's say for a family of four, the, it's about twenty-eight thousand is the federal poverty line. So, at two hundred percent, that'd be about fifty-six thousand. So, if they were less than fifty-six thousand, they'd be eligible for twenty-five percent waiver. So, it really depends on the size of the household and depends on their income of the household itself. So, it's a hundred percent waiver, so completely waived, if their income is less than a hundred and twenty-five percent of the federal poverty line.
So, and what's the federal poverty line?
It depends on the household.
Let's say a family of four.
So, the, it's about twenty-eight thousand.
Twenty-eight thousand.
So, let's say...
Jesse, wait, wait, before you go on, I just, so you said that the poverty line per person or per family?
It, it depends on the size. So, a single individual, it's about twelve thousand. That's the federal poverty line. But for a family of four, it's about twenty-eight thousand. So, it really depends on the size of the family.
Well, per adult, I mean, it's not, family of four, mom, dad, two kids would be...
Correct.
Yeah.
Twenty-eight thousand.
So, you know, it's, it's a hundred and twenty-five percent of that twenty-eight thousand. So, in that example, a family of four, two parents, two children, a hundred and twenty-five percent of twenty-eight thousand would be roughly about thirty-four thousand dollars. So, if they were at thirty-four thousand or less...
They would get the hundred percent.
They would get a hundred percent. And if they were uninsured. If they did have private insurance, of course, the private insurance would pay for it if they had Medicare, Medicaid, but this is strictly for just uninsured individuals.
And by passing this, how does it benefit the city?
So, the program that we're a part of, Texas Ambulance Supplement Program, it's a reimbursement. We receive anywhere between ninety thousand and two hundred thousand each year, based on a formula. The formula is calculated based on the cost that is associated with running the ambulance service, minus the money we make. And so, that net loss is put into a formula, and then they determine how much to cut us a check for. That program is gone. This is the last year we'll receive reimbursement based on that formula. Their formula will now be based on how much we waive. And so, if, if, we have to have some kind of waiver rules for that to, for us to continue to receive reimbursement. Now, we do anticipate it being lower than what we were receiving before, but without it, we would receive nothing. So, you know, we do need to adopt a policy. Now, this is what the standard statewide, most, most communities are using these thresholds. It's really up to the council to decide, but we feel that this is pretty fair.
I was going to ask where you got these rate numbers. A lot of communities do this?
Yes. So, part of our, we have a building company that does our ambulance building. And so, what they have is a consultant who's basically advising all the communities with, that work with that building company about these new rules. And so, that, that's a recommendation they're making to everybody. Basically, everybody's following those guidelines.
Jesse, the fact that you're thinking that the reimbursement based on these new guidelines, it's going to be less, a little less than what we're used to receiving. It's, it's solely based on the fact that, I guess, that most of our... Most of the people that are needing, what would it be, coverage, reimbursement? I don't know what it would...
We have high population of Medicare, Medicaid, and some uninsured. So, that's what this would really... That's what really hurts us in terms of the fees that are so... Because if you have insurance, they're going to pick it up, but you still got to pay something even though you have insurance.
Correct.
So, does that... Does that fall into their...
It's only indigent.
If somebody has...
For indigent only.
For uninsured.
Somebody could be making twenty-eight thousand, a family of four, and they, they have insurance. So, the insurance picks up their portion. What about the deductible or whatever? Does, does that fall into that, or are those people responsible for their share?
They would be responsible for that.
They would not be able to fall under this?
Yes, because otherwise, we would be developing a system where we're charging people differently based on their income. This is just a blanket waiver. If it is, then this.
So, it's only for Medicare, Medicaid, and uninsured?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to adopt this.
I was just about to ask. Thank you, Councilwoman Salina.
I'm trying to figure it out. I think it's going to be hard for, at least for me to figure it out.
So, we do have a motion by Councilwoman Salinas.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Ramon. Any further discussion? And this is because of the new policy that's being placed by the feds. Okay.
And if I could make another comment. So, there is a big push to bring back the old system because communities benefit more through the old system, especially communities who lose more money. But as of right now, this will definitely be in effect next year. Maybe we'll have to revisit this the following year, if those, if that does change.
We've got a bunch of lobbyists from cities working on that, right? Alright. Alright, so there's a motion and second, and no other questions. Take it to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number two, consideration and possible approval of an ordinance of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, amending section nineteen dash one forty-six, article eight, chapter nineteen, offenses and miscellaneous by adding new subsection A, B to establish transactions and convenience fees, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date.
Mayor, Council, this ordinance is being brought to you because the city is starting to launch, accepting credit cards and debit cards at several of our locations. Previously, we were only accepting it at the tax office and at municipal court. Planning has already launched theirs, but in order to, to charge the fees, the credit card processing fees and debit card processing fees, we do have to have an ordinance that authorizes us to do so. So, this is basically setting those rules. Our goal is just to pass along the charges. We're not in it to make more money off of these fees. But we do have some, we do request some wiggle room. So, that's why in the wording here, we have up to a certain amount of fee. So, you know, if the fees change, well, we can adjust them in order to make sure that we're not losing...
There you go.
So, our recommendation is to approve.
So, you, you can't just say based on the fees charged or what?
Again, we could...
The record, it's the hard copy that you have before. Number, number, item number two.
And I know right now, you paid online, or online with the, with the tax office, there is a fee associated with it, right?
Usually, yes.
Yes. I haven't done that in a while, but I did it once. Alright, is there a motion on this? Motion made by Councilwoman Ramon, second by Councilwoman Vialpando. Any further discussion? Any other comments, Jesse? Alright, take it to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
This is just one, one of those things that we have to get up there with the program, right? Just, you know, this is what people are using, then we need to...
Yeah, they can still pay through check if they prefer to, but it's a convenience fee for using...
But this allows it for online and...
Yes, it is.
Exactly.
So, the... Alright, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Just making sure. Alright, moving on to item number three, third and final reading of an ordinance changing the zoning district classification of Lot thirteen, Block forty-seven of Hillcrest Edition, two thirty-five Brasso Street, from R three duplex district to R three A apartment district, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date. Ms. Placido?
Marivelle.
Marivelle? Is she on there?
Yeah, she is.
She was.
She's muted. Take off the mute.
Ms. Marivelle?
She had, so she popped up.
Basically, it's a third reading, sir.
There are no changes.
There's no changes. Move forward from the last one. Motion made by Mayor Potem Davis, second by Councilwoman Ramon. Any further discussion? I'm being, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Thank you, Marivelle. Third and final reading of an ordinance amending the twenty nineteen, twenty-twenty budget adopted by ordinance number twenty nineteen dash fifteen to adjust citywide revenues and appropriations to fund current year commitments, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date.
Mayor, Council, we're going to ask that this item be tabled to the June meeting, the first meeting, the first Tuesday in June, because we do want to make sure that we gather as much information. When we presented this originally, I believe we were about three weeks in to, to the pandemic issues. And so, they're based on that data. We'd really like to get through May so we make sure that we feel really comfortable with our data before we finalize the budget amendment.
Do... Motion made by Councilwoman Vialpando. Second by Councilwoman Salina. Do we know how much sales tax came in in March?
In March, we lost fifteen percent from the previous year.
So, probably going to lose even more in April or about the same. And did y'all see that message from Congressman Hurd? They are extending the restrictions to nonessential travel of non-citizens until June twenty-second. So, we're going to go through this another month at least.
And if there's any silver lining, we, we have seen an uptick in traffic, in traffic revenue. So, our projection for the month of May is not as bad as we anticipated. However, now extending it June will be worse than what we had anticipated.
Yeah, and we got those numbers yesterday. Mr. Tuna and I went, met with Port Director Paul Delrincon, and he was telling us, there's still about forty-five hundred people crossing nowadays. And it's really our citizens, and they've been taking surveys of what the people are going for, and most of them are for nonessential things. You know, they're going to visit family, you know, they're, they're not going to doctors, most of them. They're not going grocery. Most of them are just going to see family. Alright, so this is tabled, we'll take it to a vote. All those in favor of tabling it? Unanimous. Vialpando?
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry, yes, that is correct.
Alright, moving on to resolutions. We got to take item five out of order, right? So, we don't need to vote on that. We're moving on to item number six.
Item number eight.
Let's go to number eight. Okay, and then we'll come back.
Yes.
Alright, other business, item number eight, discussion and possible action on the presentation for economic development for the Riskin Building.
Mayor, City Council, good afternoon. Good morning, Department, just for the record. This item is to talk about the Riskins Building and the options that just became available. Now, just to kind of brief you guys on what happened. On May seventh, the EDA announced a funding opportunity for, for the CARES Act where a large amount of money became available. Now, the, on May eighth, I reached, oh, actually, sorry, let me go back. The Austin Regional Office received two hundred and thirty-six million dollars to disperse for any economic development projects that may, might, might be able to assist, you know, the COVID outbreak. So, the next following day, I reached out to EDA representative where we talked about possibilities to place this funding in Eagle Pass. And we talked about different projects, but he mentioned one that was mentioned or that was discussed previously last year about an incubator here in Eagle Pass. So, because the funding just recently became available, they have received a large amount of money, and their purpose is to send it out to the community and make it usable as quickly as possible. Now, the amount that they received, two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, is more than they're used to. So, it's a larger fund. So, the process in itself actually became quicker. Now, after talking to Mr. Boucher, he's our representative, he mentioned that if we submit a, an application for this, for this grant funding by June first, he might be able to get us a response by no later than July with, with funding becoming available in September. So, again, this process is pretty quick as far as the turnaround. Now, with that in mind, of course, we, we thought about, you know, what are the different projects that we can fund here regionally that might be able to affect the, the community positively? Now, with the conversation with Mr. Boucher, he mentioned back again the conversation that Mr. Joe Cruz and him had a couple of years back, if not last year, about an incubator, a business incubator downtown specifically positioned in the Riskins Building. Now, the project, as it was presented last year, and the reason why we're bringing this item up today is that the Riskins Building was proposed last year as an actual convention center. Now, in order for us to have a, an application that, you know, stands a chance to get some of this funding, our request is to change some of the use, well, not some of it, but change the use of the Riskins Building back into the original idea of a business incubator. Now, just to kind of do a recap of what was mentioned last year or what was proposed last year, the, the building itself, the cost, as it was designed as a convention center with a kitchen or a restaurant up top, was estimated at a value of four point three million. Now, with the funding that became available, we have the opportunity to request a eighty-twenty match, meaning that the city would only have to match the, the funding by twenty percent. Based on the, on the estimate from last year, this amounts to eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Now, there's an additional option to bring this down to ten percent if we can show proof that the city does not have the ability to issue out additional bonds. Now, I just want to keep this in the, in the larger spectrum at twenty percent, simply just, you know, for purposes in a, I guess, worst case scenario. Right, exactly. So, just to, just to kind of keep that number in mind. Now, again, just to kind of go back into what was presented last year. Now, again, last year, this is what the, the sign looked like. On your right-hand side, you have the, the second floor, which again, was presented... On your right-hand side, you have the, the second floor, which again was presented as a, as a kitchen, and as a, as a lounge area. And we want to be able to change this to where the incubator will be placed on the second floor. Now, on the first floor, originally, it was presented as a, as a venue, you know, to host concerts, to host events. Now, part of the reason why we're suggesting that we change this topic is because, of course, the seating capabilities, as the design shows, is eight hundred and forty seats, whereas the ICT can seat just about a thousand in a, in a, in a seating arrangement, yeah, arrangement, thank you. So, the request today is that we're asking approval to modify the plans that were presented to the Riskins Building and to include some of the following. Now, of course, again, this all hinges on the fact of selling the business incubator, so of course, that is going to be the, the biggest, most substantial change. We're requesting that the second floor be adjusted to include a business incubator with at least seven different offices and two large meeting rooms and some co-working space. Now, of course, this can all change, and of course, it does have to do with, with the, with the space availability of the building. But more or less, this is where we can fit into it. Now, the other change that we're suggesting is that we kind of want to keep that idea of the, of the kitchen as it was presented on the first draft. So we want to move that to the downstairs portion of it and have two lease spaces available for restaurants. Now, in order to sell this to the EDA, what we were thinking is that we can do sort of like the same type of incubation, I guess, idea of doing a lease agreement with growing local restaurants to be in there for maybe anywhere from three to five years, to kind of go along with the process of the incubation concept. So rather than bidding it out to, to put them in there, actually take growing restaurants in the region and put them kind of like in, in the incubation process to, again, fit the whole incubation idea with, with the building. So again, we want to change that into the first floor, but also include a gift, a souvenir shopping area on the, on the first floor. And another idea that kind of came about was a, some, some room for public restaurants. Okay? And then the building itself does have an adjacent structure in the back. Of course, this would be for, you know, open for, for anything else that, you know, any other business might, might put it used to it. Now, before we go into discussion, I do want to mention that I reached out to the Rodriguez family this morning, and I just want to mention that, you know, this actually might have come up in a conversation previously, but they are willing to lease a portion, or if not the whole lot, of the area behind Kuders Bar to turn into a public restroom facility just to kind of, again, interact with, with the ideas that we're presenting here today. So again, I just want.
What area would that be?
So if, if you're, if you're kind of behind Kuders, you have the Marcus building, and then you have a little parking area right behind Kuders Bar. They actually have a, a structure there where it has two restrooms already. It's one for men's and one for women. That parking lot area, again, I spoke to them today, and they're willing to lease out to the, to the city if, if we want to construct an additional public restroom area, if, if we choose. But again, the only reason why I'm throwing that in there is because I think the idea of using public restrooms or making them available through this building is definitely great, but again, I just want to throw it out there that, that the Rodriguez also have that option available if need to be.
If needed.
Yeah. So again, these are the proposed changes that we're requesting. Again, this is a pretty quick process as far as any other process for applications, simply because of what we're going through. But again, EDA is looking for projects that are ready to throw money in there into the community and make it effective as quickly as possible. So with these changes, what, what happened is if you guys approve, we would meet with the L M V or architects to do a redesign of the, of the, of the building. Of course, there's some additional stuff that we need, additional paperwork that we need with the application, which include the, the management plan portion of the incubator, as far as, you know, how it would work, who would we accept into the program, what are the criteria that we're looking for, if there are specific types of sectors that we want to grow. Usually with an incubator, you focus on specific areas, whether it's, you know, technology, whether it's medical or anything like that. So I'm working on a, on a, on a plan like that if this goes along. And again, the, the process will be pretty quick. If approved, we will work with L M V to redesign and have the application ready by June first. Again, just to reiterate, if we turn in the application by June first, we should get a response by July, no later than July. If, if we're approved, the funds will become available no later than September.
Can you explain what an incubator, what do you, what do you mean?
Absolutely, yeah. So the, an incubator, what it is, is essentially a, a facility where, where, of course, we try to help businesses at. Better to explain is what an incubator is not. An incubator is not just a building where you lease out space to growing businesses. That's not, well, and part of it is, but that's not all it is. An incubator is a place where we provide resources to growing companies to be able to have either financial resources, to have, you know, for example, S B D C offers programs where they, they show you how to build a, a business plan. So resources like that, where, you know, people who are interested in starting a business can go in there and they have the resources from, you know, whether it's a local government, whether it's a nonprofit, to be able to provide, you know, courses, to be able to provide resources, again, when you're talking about marketing, creating a business plan, stuff like that, that are available on there. Now, these things are available through a fee that they pay. Usually, when you talk about the incubation, the incubator, you pay a monthly fee as if you were paying for office space. Now, that fee includes those resources. So when you're paying your, your payment for a monthly fee, you're getting those resources available to you. Now, of course, it comes with some benefits. You have a, a co-working area, let's say, for example, that, you know, you need to host a meeting, or, you know, again, if we go back to the same idea of, of incubating specific sectors. You know, if you have a sector that you're trying to, you know, grow, whether it's technology-based, you're surrounded by technology-based companies that are starting up. So that way, it, it creates an atmosphere where you guys can, you know, bounce back ideas, you know, create possibly additional businesses and stuff like that. So again, the incubator is not just a building where you rent out space. It's a place where growing businesses, new businesses, come and, and get resources that they need to, to be able to grow. Again, with the, with the bottom floor, you know, the, the bottom floor, essentially, what, what, the way I'm, I'm trying to sell it, if, if we, if we go about this application, is that the bottom floor would target specifically the growing sector of the, the restaurant industry. So again, businesses that are, that are, you know, a restaurant that are trying to grow, of course, we would do the same thing with them. We would offer them the same types, types of resources that we would provide to the other smaller businesses, whether, you know, if, if they're growing and they want to create a bigger management plan, if they're, they're growing and they need additional financial resources to, to purchase out a new building, anything like that, that's, that's the, the concept of an incubator.
Thank you.
Has this been, has this, any of this been put out there to the public yet, Mr. Marcus?
Um, so, of course, you know, with, with my tenure here, I, I kind of went back and did a little bit of research. It was my understanding, or it is my understanding, that, that this idea of an incubator was presented before, so I'm, I'm coming in with the assumption that this, this idea of an incubator has been presented.
No, 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 I'm sorry, I think you misunderstood the question. I know it was presented to us as a council, you know, we had, because two or three options, or maybe two options to choose from. I mean, out to the public.
Yeah, actually, that's a terrific question. Yeah, so when I came on board, I, I know Joe Cruz, the Main Street manager, had already reached out to several businesses who were interested, so in fact, part of the application process will include letters of support and letters of intent to, to, to rent out some of these, these offices. So has it been fully sold to the community? I don't think to the extent that we would want to, but has, has the business community been notified? I know some of the entrepreneurs in the, in town have been notified of this, yes.
So you're saying we have some letters of intent, is that what you're saying?
We've had communications with businesses that are interested to, to renting out offices, yes, yeah. And again, with, with the, the idea or the concept of the, of the seven offices, again, I know Joe Cruz had reached out to a minimum of, of seven different potential businesses that, that he wants to reach out to.
Is Mr. Cruz available?
Uh, Mr. Cruz.
That's what, I mean, I'm glad that you alluded to that because that was sort of my, my question along why the change in the, the second floor with the seven, with the offices and all of it, and the meeting rooms, so. I mean, that's fine that we can rent them out if it's going to actually do its purpose, but I honestly, in, in all honesty, I can tell you that I like the idea of what it had before.
The convention center?
Well, like the restaurant and all that stuff upstairs.
Take it back to the, the diagram where it's.
Yeah, so this is, again, what you're seeing on screen is what was proposed.
Yeah, like what you have on the second floor, where you had sort of like a restaurant and then like an alfresco dining slash bar.
So we did a walkthrough today, a quick walkthrough, and again, just kind of comparing both ideas and, and, you know, what was previously presented and, and, you know, of course, where we want to go. We talked about kind of keeping the, the open area concept available still, but rather than having it here, switching it here, but again, this would be something that we would need approval first from the council to, to determine whether, you know, this is something that's viable or not. But the, the open seating area, the way we discussed it earlier today is that it's, it's, it, we don't want to waste space. We don't want to waste it, because I mean, outside, I mean, even, even just today, like, it would be a perfect day for, if, you know, this weren't happening, if a restaurant was available to have open seating outside. So we don't want to waste space, we were talking about this earlier. You know, we do want to keep that same idea, but again, we would need to get approval first for the redesign.
You don't have that last, the, one that was presented a few years back, where it actually showed like some office space and outdoors on the second floor?
Uh, yeah, I think you're referring to the twenty fourteen study for the Riskins Building. I, you know what, I, I don't have it here. No, I don't, no, sir.
Question?
Yes.
Sorry.
No, it's just, I, I mean, I think all of us were here, but not Councilman Salina, but he could look at that rendering and what was being proposed in the terms of incubator space. I, I think it's important to understand that people who want to start a business but don't actually have means to rent out two thousand, three thousand square foot building, they can rent out five hundred, a thousand square feet, depending on, on what they're going to be starting up. And that's really what it is. It, it helps them start up their business, and hopefully, as they grow, you know, they do go and have their own building and office or wherever they may be.
Right, so actually, with the incubator, you usually want to have some sort of a graduation program. So usually, what happens is that you want to have like at least a certain amount of, of time where you allow a business to grow, and you set different thresholds for them. So if, for example, we want a business to grow, we usually have a, a lease agreement for about three years where we say, you know, your, your first milestone is going to be in one year where you're able to launch your product, you know, your second year, you know, things like that where, where you create a plan. And again, that's the difference between having just an office space available and having an incubator, because you have that, 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 that team that's helping you kind of grow the, the business. And actually, speaking of the resources, so again, just going back to the timeline when this was first presented or made available through the EDA, I took the liberty to reach out to several different partners, including S B D C, People Fund, and Lift Fund. People Fund and Lift Fund being C D F, C D F I S, which stands for Community Development Financial Institutions. And after conversations with them, they said that they're willing to provide financial literacy courses for businesses specifically. So again, this, these are some of the amenities that would be available to them, to the businesses that are starting to grow. For that particular example, you know, they want to grow their business, but they don't necessarily know how to do it. They don't know where to get the financial for, support for, for their growth. So doing partnership, partnerships with, with companies like this and having them physically available in the building allows them to not have to, you know, kind of squander around different places trying to find different financial options for them.
Now, you said you got to turn this by June first.
Yes.
You got ten days after the date.
It's a very aggressive, in fact, I think I'm understating that, that's, it's a very, very aggressive timeline, to be quite honest with you. But this is, the only reason why I, I, I personally think that we should pursue this is the, the matching fund options.
Yeah, I think it's a great opportunity.
Right, so.
Okay, before, before you go on, Mr. Marcus, I'm sorry to, but I, I want to ask that because if not, there's no use, you know, even, I mean, we obviously need to make a decision, but, so that grant availability, hopefully, is it available with either one of our plans or not necessarily?
That's a very good question. I'm really glad you asked it. So after speaking with Mr. Boucher, you know, of course, we, I, I talked, after we started getting into the conversation of Riskins Building itself, of course, the concept of the incubator is the selling point, and again, that's something I mentioned earlier.
The concept of the what, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Of the incubator.
Uh-huh.
So the incubator itself is going to be the selling point of this project. If we were to go back to the convention center, again, if you, if you realize what the funds are for is to help reactivate the economy. So what they're looking for in the application is the number of jobs created or the diversification of, of businesses. Now, when you're talking about a convention center, you're not necessarily, you know, attacking either one of those points. I mean, you are definitely creating more space for downtown, but you're not necessarily either creating additional new jobs off the bat, as you would with an incubator, whereas, you know, with the incubator, the purpose of it is to diversify the types of businesses that are here. I know we talk about, you know, restaurants opening up, I know we talk about, you know, different, you know, salons or anything like that, but an incubator focuses more on different types of, of businesses. And again, I, I go back to the example of technology-based businesses.
And I understand all that. So basically, just to be clear, you know, we need to, to be clear on this. Just basically, the answer to my question is no? Not, both of them qualify? One would qualify, not the other?
Apologize, yeah, you're, you're right.
Okay, because that's what I want to know, because I think we need to understand that, you know, in order for us to obviously make a decision.
Absolutely.
So the incubator, um, um, idea would qualify, but not?
The incubator idea would allow us a higher chance of getting this grant.
Okay.
Right.
And the other one?
The other one, it's, it's unlikely, it's unlikely that, that we get it through that.
Well, it makes sense because we would, the city would only have to fund twenty percent, right?
Right, right.
If we get it.
If, yeah, in, in the event.
It's understandable why the incubator, because I mean, it's obviously economic development, they want to make sure that there's a return on it. So I mean, with that in mind, I really like the idea, I mean, if you need a motion, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mayor Proton Davis, second by Councilman Salinas.
The only thing before we, what I was going to say, before you, you know, spend all that time or money on having them redesigned, if it's, if at all possible, because I mean, I know you said that you were redoing, I, I was looking at my phone to see if I still had the email for, I don't delete a lot of it, to see if I had anything that Joe Cruz had sent us quite a while back, but I guess my phone is still.
If you can.
Still searching for it. But at any rate, if we can try to leave the upstairs somewhat very similar, maybe adding to it, and maybe leave some of, put some of the other offices downstairs, that way we can, I just think it, it's almost like a, a nice jewel that we can use upstairs in a different way. I would hate it to be offices and lose the, the overlook and all of that stuff, just, that's just me.
Okay, so what you're saying is to hopefully move the incubator portion downstairs?
Well, because you had, because you were saying that you were, that you sort of almost made it sound like you were flip-flopping things.
That's what.
I mean, because I know we're doing away with the, the venue for rent on the bottom, but I mean, since we have a lot of space downstairs, can we put some of the offices down there if they're smaller? And still have space for some of the restaurants, maybe have one larger, one smaller. You see, because you have a lot of space, and, because I, I, I'm still trying to understand how you're going to leave some of the second floor the way it is and add to it, unless you're just adding the offices to the back. I mean, then that's fine, but.
Yeah, no, I'm not sure if you can.
I mean, I know it's too early to see, because we don't have a rendition, but I'm still trying to remember what I saw, and I, I, I love what I saw, that's what I can tell you.
So the, the way it's set up, as it was approved last year, is that you do have two office spaces already. There are, there were designs for two dressing rooms, I, I'm talking about the, the first floor.
Right.
Two dressing rooms, second, of course, we changed to.
To offices.
To offices. Now, the way we discussed on the second floor was sort of an L shape.
Okay.
So where you have offices all the way on the back, off to the side, and then here in the front, we would have two conference rooms. Of course, the conference room idea is to have the, the windows that are on the front of the building to be facing out, you know, in case they need to have a meeting or anything like that, for them to be facing out into the streets. Now, again, this is something that we just really mentioned this morning, was that we, we are a hundred percent in agreement with you that the open area would be a waste of space if we don't use it.
Right.
So the, and this is something I actually kind of mentioned with Vanessa earlier, because we were talking about the elevators. If we make the elevator accessible to, to the bottom floor, where, let's say, for example, you go to a restaurant and, you know, they're packed, you have a particular space, but you want to go outside, make the elevators accessible enough where you can go upstairs into the, into the open area and, you know, still enjoy and, and, and make use of that space.
I, I think, you know, I'm agreeing with Mayor Proton Davis. I would like to see more office spaces downtown, downstairs.
Downstairs, okay.
You know, because the whole purpose of it is to get activity in downtown on a daily basis.
Right.
This would really spur that, you know, once it takes off. If you open up businesses, they're going to have people in there.
Okay.
And that's going to generate more people in downtown. And that's really what we're looking for down there. How do we get people down there? And, and we're looking to enhance, you know, for restaurants and other businesses. So I've always liked that idea that incubator businesses, you know, offer, you know, new people, the opportunity to start up their business, you know, whatever it may be. And then let them grow there to the point where they, like you said, they graduate and move on to maybe a bigger building and, and provide more jobs and more opportunities for our community and for our citizens. And then it opens up the door for somebody else as that happens. So I, I like the idea. I don't know if, if they'd be willing to give us, you know, two lanes, but I know that, that the one from 2014 had a nice little idea of how to do it. So I don't know if that's something you're going to base yourself off of or you're going to come up with a whole new game plan. I, I, I like that and you can share that with the council, you know, and that, that way they can see that. I know most, all of us have seen except for Councilman Salinas, but you can share it with all of us still. And, uh, maybe they can give you, you know, some input and, and we'll come up with something to finalize it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I know you were saying about like technology-based, you know, stuff. I mean, like, I mean, I'm seeing that huge open space in the middle like where it could have been like for events and stuff. I mean, you can also create like a, um, a wifi garden or something in the middle to where people can sort of just hang out in a sense, but it's an indoor courtyard type of still, and you can still, those people can be almost like a, there's like a space for the, like a waiting area, like where they pick up coffee, soda, snack, wait instead of, uh, take, waiting to get their computer serviced, whatever the case may be.
Right. Uh, y- yeah, actually, uh, if I remember correctly, I, I think, uh, Joe might have, when he presented this idea back to, to the council was that, uh, that area, the middle area was, I guess, proposed as a small museum. Uh, I'm not sure if that's a concept that you guys are willing to, uh, keep, keep on there.
Say it again?
I guess Joe Cruz mentioned a, a small museum in that middle area. And again, I'm, I'm not sure if that's something that you guys were, were willing to keep.
How, how, what, how big is the museum?
So, uh, again, if you're talking about constructing the, the restaurants off to the side of the, and this is office on the side. This area itself is a, is still a pretty large area, um, where you can, you know, post, uh, a different art. Well, yeah, pieces, I guess you could say, not art shows, but pieces.
In addition to the.
In addition to the, the art center, that's next door, yes.
In addition to the art center and to the museum that we already have, I think it would be a good idea to think of, be a little more creative other than just.
Sure.
Let me see, we have one, you know, we have the art center. Um, you mentioned a gift shop. I know that in most cities or most, most, well, some that are visited. You know, the, the gift shop, the city gift shop is usually in the library, which is also, you know, it would be good for bringing people into the library. So this can definitely be utilized. It's got a lot of uses, you know, and it can be utilized as, as other things.
It's a pretty large space for.
I like the idea of a courtyard there, you know, I think that we don't have that here, so that would be great. And I think you're pretty creative. I could, I think you can come up with other things. Now, one last question that I, I want to ask.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, if approved, you know, hopefully we will be approved, are we binded in any way as to the kind of, um, or once we're approved, that's it, we do pretty much what we need to do with those offices? Or are we binded through the grant as to what, to what businesses we can lease out to?
So the management plan, we created and we.
It's ours.
Yeah, we decide who we get in there. Um, now, as far as whether we're binded or not, we are binded to the idea of the incubator because again, the incubator is.
But they have no hold on us to, or you can't rent to such businesses, it's got to be this or that. That's totally up to.
Yes.
The city.
We make that choice. And again, it's, it's back to us because we, we make the decision on who we want to grow as a community.
Right, okay.
But, and if anything, that, is that, is there a specific sector that you guys would like for me to include in that plan?
No, right now, I mean, I can't think, I don't know.
What would you recommend as the economic developer because?
Yeah, um, so it's, I, I think right now it's, it's a little early to say, uh, me personally. Um, I think if we keep it on the, on the general basis, it's, it's better. I think focusing on the sector right now as we sit, as a community is just, uh, it's not beneficial to us. Um, I think that we still need to find, um, the, the, the right talent, uh, to see where, where we want to face off. Um, I think that, you know, there, there's plenty of entrepreneurs out there. Uh, I mean, uh, we've spoken to, you know, so, people that sell, uh, solar panels that are doing great. Uh, you know, we have, uh, people that have pretty amazing ideas on, on, on general services. Um, so to, for me to speak specific sector, I, I, I don't have one.
No, we shouldn't limit ourselves yet. Let's, let's pack it in and then we can start being a little choosier on that.
Precisely, yes.
Now, in, in reference to having a restroom in there or, or utilizing what's been offered, I would like, I'm of the opinion, if we can put it somewhere else, let's put it somewhere else. That way it doesn't become something that, you know, can, you know, leave a sour smell there and taste or whatever. Okay? So if we can do that and that's something that we can do, uh, I, I know, you, you mentioned lease, but I, I think they've offered part of that land to do some public restrooms and, and it is a need. Uh, it's a shame that they themselves have taken upon themselves to put those restrooms out there for the public and they're the ones maintaining it for the entire public that visits downtown. And so that's something that we really need to look at down the lineup. Because if we can do it somewhere else, we should put them somewhere else and not make it part of, of this center.
Mayor.
Yes.
This is Eddie Bruce. Uh, keep in mind that we are doing the condemnation work for the, the main property almost right across. And it's going to be a pocket park and I understand that it was also contemplated some restrooms to be there.
That's correct. If, if they agree to it, then we can discuss it. In the meantime, you know, we have to have our options open. No, it's already.
We can go ahead and vote on it, but just so that you know, Ronnie DeRosa from Grants is, uh, going to send you all the rendition.
He sent it already?
Hey, take it, I mean, he's, you'll get it to your city email just so that you know.
Yeah.
But anyways, we can vote if you want.
All right, so any other questions? And once again, you got ten days.
Good luck.
You can get it done.
We're trying, sir.
There you go.
Just do your best. And just as long, just as long as we have flexibility and then I think that's what she was alleging.
Yes.
So as long as we have flexibility, I mean, let's get the grant first and then we'll worry about, you know.
Yeah. The main thing is it has to.
But let's get the monies first.
The main thing, it has to have that incubator component in there to be more attractive to them.
I mean, I don't think they would have a problem if you moved it from the first to the second to the second to the first or whatever. But so as the concept stays the, the same, I think that would be okay, in my opinion. I don't know.
Just for clarification, I know you mentioned moving, moving office space to the downstairs area. Uh, do you have, uh, I guess, a, a recommendation for the second floor?
Well, no, I was just asking you if we were going to take, completely take away the idea of what we had on the second floor or we were adding to. That's what I, you know.
I mean, if. Instead of having two side to side, I mean.
Okay. All right.
Because the, the way the rendition was 2014, it looked really nice from.
It really did.
You know, and if we can incorporate that into it still, I think that would be a huge selling point. And once again, we're trying to get people downtown and this is the way that, that's going to get people downtown.
Yeah, because if you can have that restaurant bar notion upstairs and still have offices upstairs, that's not a problem.
Yeah.
And the same thing downstairs because you have so much space. Instead of having the two restaurants downstairs, I mean, you might have one up, one down and, you know, you have a little bit more versatility on the lower level. And that way there's a little bit more foot traffic on the lower level instead of having so many upstairs.
Sure.
I just think, you know, as a patron, I would think, you know, a, a quicker in and out is going to be a little bit easier to, to drum up a little bit more business, I think.
Yep.
Sure, okay.
All right, so there's a motion and a second. Uh, there's no further discussion. We'll take it to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that takes us back to item number five.
Correct.
Which are related.
Yes.
Item number five, resolution, consideration and possible approval of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, authorizing the submission of a grant application with the U.S. Economic Development Administration for the Economic Adjustment Assistance Program. Authorizing the city manager to act on behalf of the City of Eagle Pass in all matters related to the application and pledging that if a grant is received, the City of Eagle Pass will comply with the grant requirements of the U.S. Economic Development Administration. Is that you, Jesse?
No.
No.
It's, it's Arturo.
Oh, it's still Arturo again.
Yeah.
I saw you get up here.
Well, it's the same thing.
Well, that's everything that you just went over.
Yeah, this is exactly.
So this is the, the res, sorry, uh, this is the resolution to, to be submitted with the application.
So ma- motion made by Councilman Salinas, second by Mayor Pro Tem Davis. Any other?
I'm just going to tell you, congratulations for looking after this because I was reading how another community was working and getting, um, identifying several million dollars for an airport on another neighboring border community. So when I saw that, I was like, and when I came in and I was reading the thing that you saw that cares, I said, nah. I'm just, I was just really happy to be able to read that. So keep up the good work.
Yeah, thank you.
Same here.
All right, no further discussion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number six. Consideration and possible approval of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, authorizing the acceptance of the Coronavirus Relief Fund grant funds allocation from the state of Texas. Jess?
Uh, Mayor, Council. Um, at a previous meeting, we talked about how the CARES Act was passed by the federal government and how the city hadn't really not received any direct assistance as a result of it. Uh, because of CARES Act, what it did is it dispersed money to states and cities with a population, uh, over five hundred thousand. So since then, the governor, the state of Texas, has announced that they were allocating part of their allocation to communities under, uh, five hundred thousand in population. And they developed a calculation based on fifty-five dollars per capita. So basically, that translates to the city can ask for reimbursement of up to one point five eight two million dollars. So just over one and a half million dollars that we, we could tap into. So there are very, very limited uses for these funds. And so what the rules, oh, let me go over this. The, the, the funds can only be used for unbudgeted expenses. So, you know, when you talk about personnel, if that person already had a salary, then you can ask for any part of their salary. You can just ask for whatever wasn't budgeted. So in most of our cases, it's just going to be the overtime. So what are we going to use it for? Is to cover personnel and supplies expenses, again, overtime. What we, what we also want to do is to initiate small business support and provide individual assistance, both of which are eligible under the program. So when it comes to those items, I'm just using it as informational purposes. At, at another council meeting, the first meeting in June, uh, Mr. Marquez will come back to council, uh, with the actual program for the city to adopt so that we can start dispersing some of that money. So what are the requirements when it comes to these funds? Um, so all expenses have to be made by December thirty-first of this year. Um, at least seventy-five percent has to be used for personnel and public health expenses. Uh, we cannot using it, use it to cover revenue shortfalls. And there's a lot of requirements on there. Most of them are basic requirements, but I needed to point this out that the city will be required to use the E-Verify system for employment through December thirty-first. So E-Verify basically verifies if employees are legally eligible to work in the United States. That's not a requirement for the city right now. It's an option if we wanted to use it, but if we approve this, we do have to use it. Right now, what it is, we use the I-nine form where they provide us documents and that's what we use. But if we do accept this, HR will have to go through the E-Verify system, uh, if we decide to accept it. And that's basically it. So what this resolution does is it just authorizes us to submit to the state saying, yes, we want our allocation set aside, and then we start asking for reimbursements for the items that, that the council approves.
Thank you, Jess. And just so you know, these are all types of grants that are being pushed by the governor's office, of course, thanks to the, to the federal government. And, and as we see those on our emails, I'm pushing them out to them to make sure that we're looking at how we can use it. Now, there are some ways to help out our local business sector, so I think it's important to consider it. And so thanks for bringing it up. And, uh, the main thing we got to keep in mind, whatever we propose, it's got to be used by December thirty-first. You know, so if it doesn't get used up by December thirty-first, we, we don't, we can't claim it.
Do we need a motion?
So is there a motion?
Yes.
So move.
All right, well, yeah, Ms. Ramon, Councilwoman Ramon called the motion for a second by Councilman Salinas. Any further discussion? All right, I'll, we'll take it to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number seven. Discussion and possible action on a resolution of the City Council of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, approving a settlement terms agreement between Eagle Point Ranch, LP, Robert Mayo and Rick Anderson as plaintiffs and the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, City of Eagle Pass Waterworks System and Roberto Gonzalez as defendants involving a cause of action between the plaintiffs and defendants numbered and styled as cause number eighteen dash two dash three six seven twelve dash MCV. Eagle Point Ranch LP, Robert Mayo and Rick Anderson plaintiffs versus City of Eagle Pass Waterworks System, City of Eagle Pass and Roberto Gonzalez defendants and the District Court, two ninety-third Judicial District, Maverick County, Texas.
Mayor, this item is also set for executive session. I know that there's some information that Ms. Letice Saraviegas needs to provide to the council before you make a decision. Um, she's also on, on the Zoom video conference. Right, I would ask, unless she feels otherwise, I would ask that you wait until after you veer her, um, the, the presentation in executive session.
So we table for executive session?
Oh, I was going to say, good evening, Mayor and Council. I would agree with, uh, Mr. Morales. Uh, and, uh, we could wait till executive session when you're ready and I can present to you and then we can take action on this resolution.
I'm going to motion to table.
Motion made to table for executive session, second by Mayor Pro Tem Davis, second by Councilwoman Ramon. All those in favor to table, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Um, item number eight, no, item number nine, consideration possible and possible approval of a memorandum agreement, MOA, between the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms and Explosives and Eagle Pass Police Department for reimbursement of overtime salary costs associated with ATF task force. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Eagle Pass Police Department cur- currently has a memorandum of understanding with the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco and Farms, which was approved by council back in June of twenty sixteen. Uh, I currently met with a new supervisor and, uh, this, this current MOU that we have now expires in September twenty twenty. So we brought new forward the new MOU, which this one will last, it'll, it'll, it is approved by council, it, it'll go through September of twenty twenty-five. Uh, we work very well with ATF, like, like, uh, we have with other federal agencies. It feels good when they come back at you that they don't want to renew their MOUs with, with our city. That means we can keep up with the big boys out there, so, uh, I'm very, you know, excited that we're going to continue working with them. Hopefully, if you pass this MOU, uh, I'll be meeting with him hopefully next week, everything goes well. But we've been able to work some good operations for the benefit of the city in the last four years with ATF.
Is there any changes to the last MOU?
No, Mayor, there are not.
No? Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Ramon, second by, I'm sorry. Motion made by Councilwoman Ramon, second by Mayor Pro Tem Davis. Any discussion?
Just want to thank you for what you're all doing and then you keep, keep up the great work that you are doing. These, I think these, um, MOUs are important that we're working interlo- like, inter, um, agencies and stuff like that. It's very important. I think it, it adds to the general safety of our community.
And if I may add, I met with, uh, Port Director Paul Derincon yesterday and he just complimented on the work that they're doing together on seizures and busts going into Mexico. So, Chief, thank you for working with the port, with the CBP. And, and we know that if there's funds confiscated, there's a potential that we can get a certain percentage of that, you know, coming to the city as well. And I know that's not how we do it, but that's a benefit of it.
Right.
No, and, and, and thank you so much. And, and also, uh, finance has been a very integral part of us establishing MOUs because most of the work easily comes, comes up. But we do the operational plans up there in the field. When it comes down to asset forfeiture and, uh, working with the agencies and, and the paperwork, uh, finance has always been, been there. So, uh, thank you, Jesse and staff, for doing it. Yes, and it does feel good when these agencies come back and they want to renew their MOUs with us. It just shows that we can work together with them. And for that, I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So there's a motion and a second. No further discussion. Take it to vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Item number ten, consideration and possible action on the final plot of the Elm Creek Ranch Subdivision Unit Two. Mariveth?
I, yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, what you have before you is a subdivision application, application submitted by Amisac Consulting Services. Uh, we're seeking for final files for the subdivision. So, this site consists of an approximate 4.5 acre tract subdivided into 50 single residential family docks, properly located north of Pizallayo Elementary. And due note that the infrastructure has been completed and accepted by all utilities, companies, and entities involved. Therefore, it is a recommendation of the planning department and the planning and zoning commission that the final plat of the Elm Creek Ranch subdivision unit should be granted based on the recommendation report provided. And if you have any questions?
Yes, Mariveth, we've, this is out in the county, so they, it's going through their process too, to get approved?
That is, that's correct, Mayor. After this, it goes to the planning commissioner report. After that, then it gets, the plat gets recorded.
All right. Any other questions? Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Davis, second by Councilwoman Ramon. No further discussion. Take it to vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number 11, consideration and possible action on the preliminary plat of the Santa Maria State Subdivision. Mariveth?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The following is a preliminary classification submitted by Tech Services. That development is located south of the La Digo Farms and Legacy Village off of Legacy Boulevard and north of 57 High subdivision. Site can be accessed by Legacy Boulevard and 116, also known as Extension of Second Street. Subject development consists of approximately 74 acres proposing to be subdivided into 29 residential lots. With that being said, it is a recommendation of the planning department and the planning and zoning commission that the preliminary plat of the Santa Maria State subdivision unit should be granted based on the recommendation report provided. Any questions?
No question? Is there a motion? Motion made by Councilwoman Bialpando, second by Mayor Pro Tem Davis. No further discussion. We'll take it to vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Item number 12.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mariveth.
Thank you, Mariveth. Item number 12, consideration and possible ratification of an agreement between the Fort Duncan Regional Medical Center and the City of Eagle Pass to provide COVID-19 services to Maverick County.
Eddie?
Chief?
Eddie?
Eddie, is that you? Good morning.
Good morning.
My 12, my 12 looks different than yours 12, and I had my phone, my, I was on mute, sorry.
And that's a hard copy.
Yes, it's a hard.
You all should have a copy. Ask the other to make a copy of it. We also, shortly after the announcement, or before the announcement was made, it was circulated to Imelda and to the City Council, the agreement between the City of Eagle Pass, the County of Maverick, and Fort Duncan Regional Medical Center. The terms were discussed in detail by the mayor and the county judge in the press conference. I've also taken the liberty to discuss this with the individual, with the council members. Let me know if you have any questions. What we're doing now is, because we needed to act quickly and resolve this issue at the request of the mayor and the county judge, otherwise an order would be issued under the disaster declaration. Fort Duncan agreed to participate in some negotiations and enter into an agreement. We are now asking the council as a whole to ratify the decision to enter into this agreement. Let me know if you need any more of the specifics. I think I've gone through them, but I can do so if you so choose.
And so, this is just an agreement we came to with the Fort Duncan Regional Medical Center, like Eddie said. So, this is just the language behind it, and what they agreed to do in terms of testing for coronavirus.
Mr. Mar, I do have a question. And it's more of a, I give more of a concern than a question, okay? I understand that, that the goal here, you know, is of course to test every citizen that needs to be tested. But in talking to, to administration at the hospital, okay, it was, or I understood, okay, maybe you can clear this up for me, that the hospital is emergency providers system. You know, you have a car accident, you go to the hospital. You, you have surgery, you know, you're taking care of aftercare, and then after that, you go see the doctor at their office, okay? The reason why I'm asking this, and why I just think it's important, and I know that, you know, you all entered into an agreement already and all that, I just wanna make sure, you know, for, for other citizens, because I'm gonna give you an example. You know, there's an employee at the Eagle Pass, Jeri, okay? And she was telling us that on Sunday, she had a car accident, and she was actually told not to go to the hospital because it was packed with people that were there to test. And so, that's a concern. You know, how are we gonna treat those emergency cases? Because those citizens also need care. So, how is that being worked out? Because we don't want those people to be denied services because they're concentrating on something that, you know, as a matter of fact, he explained to me that they're not, they're a healthcare provider, in essence, it's a medical facility, but they're not a testing clinic. So, what's the difference? I mean, I understand the difference. I just wanna make sure how this affects those citizens that do have emergencies. And the reason for that, I'm not inexperienced in the medical field, so I don't, you know, I don't consider myself to know much of this, and that's why I'm asking. Go ahead, sir.
Hold on, we got a caller 02 on there. Should they be on?
Well, we're not in executive session, no, no. Who was the caller?
I think that's my.
Yeah, that's Mariveth.
Is that Mariveth? Okay.
No, Mariveth, it's Mr. MR.
No, Mariveth, is there MR?
MR is her computer, but when she had technical difficulties, she called on.
Oh, okay, okay, just making sure. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, to answer your question, ma'am, we've had multiple meetings with Fort Duncan. One of our, the main intent for this is, we do not want to overrun the ER. They are an emergency facility. However, the patients that are arriving there, we do not send them there. They arrive by ambulance, or they arrive by private vehicle. What we are asking Fort Duncan to do is test those that arrive that are ill and do meet their criteria to be in the emergency room. However, in a case where, let's assume that this is a Sunday.
Right.
And we do not have a testing facility available.
Okay.
Then what they will be doing on their own accord is that we will have our personnel there, and a patient who, let's assume, shows up just because they wanna test.
Right.
And they have no other reason to be in the emergency room. They will not enter the emergency room. They will fill out a separate form on the outside where our personnel are going to be at, and somebody will come and test them and send them on their way, assuming that it's on a Sunday. If it's during the week, the personnel that we do have there will meet with those patients that do not meet the criteria to be in the emergency room, and they will be processed to test at our other facilities that are available. So, by no means do we want to overrun the emergency room. It is true that the emergency room is packed, but it's because it's the only hospital.
Right.
But that is, has nothing to do with the COVID testing, in other words. If somebody shows up that is ill, for whatever reason, that is the only facility that can care for somebody other than the stat ER.
Right.
The stat ER has their own criteria. So, people go to the emergency room on a daily basis anyway. Nobody is turned away, and it is not because of the testing. So...
Well, this lady says that that's what she was told, and she's pregnant also. It was her and her partner, you know, they had a car accident. And, and, you know, she just said, you know, they told me not to go because...
Well, I am meeting with Mr. Montalvo de Maro, the CEO. He asked to meet with us. So, we'll be meeting, and we'll have that conversation, because, once again, they shouldn't be turning people away.
Well, it was in the hospital that told them not to go.
Well, Mr. Montalvo's the CEO of the hospital.
I spoke to Mr. Montalvo, that's what I'm saying. That's the person that I spoke to.
And he said that they turned them away?
No, the person that had the accident. That's, she's the one that told me that she was, that told her not to go to the hospital.
So, and you told that to Montalvo?
No, that was after the conversation. That was after my conversation with Mr. Mar.
We'll bring it up now. Is a hospital a testing center? Yes, they are. They do tests all the time. Now, we're not overrunning the hospital with COVID patients. We're not telling them, take them in. No, they go, they have symptoms, test them, and send them home, like almost everybody else does. It's very few people. Early on, they did hospitalized, I think, seven, early on, and they would test them, and then they would leave them there. The results would come back, and they let them go. Was there a need for them to keep them? Not really. And we're not asking them to house them till they get the results, test them, so we can find out if they're positive or not. So, when they say it's overrun by COVID, I just don't see that. But, you know, everybody's gonna have their, look, there's different opinions on what was done and how it's done. At the end of the day, if somebody shows up with symptoms, they should be tested. And that's what we agreed to. And that's something we had agreed to verbally three other times. And finally, we had to put it on paper because they weren't living up to the three other times that we agreed to verbally. You know, we don't wanna overrun a hospital.
So, there's no other facility other than the hospital that's testing on Saturdays and Sundays?
Stat and them. UMC is closed, and so is the hospital district.
So, we're not asking people to go to the hospital. We do not direct people to the hospital. People who show up to a hospital show up for a need. So, they have their own criteria and their basis on their own program. If the patient, based on the signs and symptoms, is flagged for toasting, testing, then they have to test. The issue that we had with them was that they were not testing, and they're trying to avoid testing.
And they would send them off elsewhere to test.
Let me ask you a question, because, okay, you said that on the weekends, since y'all brought that up. I'm trying to just collect all the information here. On a weekend, it's the only two testing facilities, it would be Fort Duncan Regional Medical Center and the Stat Eagle Pass. Now, because you had said, did someone say something about insurance or something? Regardless of coverage, will they be accepted at either facility, or are they gonna be, because I know at one facility, if they're not insured, they won't take them. They have to be sent to the hospital.
Fort Duncan receives money for indigent care.
Right. And that's what I'm saying. What if they, I mean, if they don't, if they're considered indigent, can they still go to Stat?
They, they, they do get reimbursed for that, yes.
At Stat.
See, I mean, and I think this is some of the information that needs to be coming out to the public that makes them aware of where they can go. Because I think that's what's really more important, like, no offense to what's being said in the press releases, but, or the updates, the daily updates. This is what people need to know. Where do I need to go if I have symptoms? Because we don't want them to feel like the hospital's the only place, or Stat's the only place, or UMC. We, I mean, whatever's probably closest to them is probably the best thing to be. That way, they're, if they are positive, they have hopefully less contact with less people. So, you wanna try to keep them as close to home as possible. I just think we need to be focused on educating our public on stuff like that, more so than, you know...
Absolutely. We have our call center, and everybody that has signs and symptoms, we try to push to our testing site or United Medical Centers. However, if somebody falls ill on a weekend, and they're having shortness of breath, where are they supposed to go? The emergency room. What is the emergency supposed to do? Test them and treat them. That's what we're asking them to do. That's what they have failed to do.
And right now, we have an agreement, right? I'm looking at it, where the CEO of the hospital has agreed to the terms that both parties recommend, EOC and the hospital?
Exactly. So, every time somebody gets flagged, I get notified. And the Dr. Valdez also gets notified.
I'm glad that we could come into an agreement with the hospital. I just wanna say also that we do, like you say, we have one hospital. So, for me, I hate, I just don't like the fact that we criticize. I've heard a lot of critiques about Fort Duncan Hospital, seeing that they're the only hospital, and they don't have that much staff. So, they do the best that they can with what they have. But with that said, all this, if we have an agreement, and both people have agreed, then we move forward. But just the criticizing of the hospital and what they did, that's in the past. But let's move forward from that.
Yeah.
And I agree with that.
Instead, give credit to these people.
Right. I definitely, my respects to all those people. You know, it's something that I wouldn't be able to do. But anyways, and see, that's where my concern is, okay? Because this lady, she's pregnant. She's pregnant, and she was told, not by a hospital employee, okay?
Okay, so then that's...
No, 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 no. But it was, it was very important, the person that told her not to go because of this, okay? I'm not making up this story. She was telling me, you know, she was just telling me what happened to them. My concern is, and I'm gonna, you know, voice my concern here very clear, she's pregnant, she was told not to go, and I'll tell you of...
But once again, she was not, she was not...
Of the camera, excuse me, Mayor, I'm not finished yet, please. And my concern is, where is our responsibility if anything happens to this lady that is pregnant? Because we have a responsibility to our citizens that wanna be tested. I accept that 120%. But we also have a responsibility to the other citizens. You know, as a council and as mayor, we have responsibilities to everyone. And we just need to make sure that everyone is being taken care of. I don't have a doubt that you're doing an excellent job with what you're doing. As a matter of fact, I wish I, you know, I would hear more from you, because I know you're the person in charge, you know? But do we, are we responsible as the City Council in any way if anything were to happen to this lady, young lady, she's a young lady that is pregnant? And let's say, you know, something happens as a result of that. Because I'm hesitant to, to, to agree with something like this if it's putting somebody else, you know what I'm saying? I don't know if I'm explaining myself.
And you're very right.
What you're saying is that we're sort of shifting...
No.
Exactly. I mean, I think...
We want, we want...
I wanna make sure, I understand. What you're trying to say is that we wanna make sure that all citizens have the access to healthcare.
Absolutely.
And that's what we're asking for.
And that's what we're, and that's what we're asking them to do. We're just simply telling them to do their job. That's all we're asking them to do, the way it's supposed to be. That's all we're doing. They should not be refusing anybody.
And I haven't read it. And once again, they were not told, that pregnant lady was not told by any medical person from the hospital not to go, okay? That's what you're saying.
Well, I'm not gonna...
And people are gonna talk.
That I'm gonna leave for when we're, of the camera, because I don't want her to...
If it is somebody from the hospital, I'll have that conversation with Mr. Montalvo.
If somebody from the hospital.
I think we need to stay on the agenda. Let's not talk about things that are irrelevant. Let's just stick to the agenda, please.
And I agree with you. But I wanna know how this, how we're responsible for this in any event that anything does happen to, let's just, you know, worst-case scenario.
Council? Mr. Ramon?
This actually has to do with item. So, if that's a concern, it's, it sounds like, okay, don't, don't accept, don't, don't monitor, don't evaluate people that might have COVID-19. That's, that's not what a hospital's supposed to do, okay? So, they're gonna take the risk in going to a hospital any day of the week, whether it's COVID-19, influenza, strep, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, the hospital has taken precautions, and especially they're pregnant, they got another route to go to. So, they have taken precautions in trying to isolate people who might be COVID-19. And the only thing we're asking is, it's a Saturday night, somebody shows up with a chills, a fever, and you don't test them? Then that's, that's wrong. That person needs care, and they shouldn't be tested.
And I agree.
And that's, that's all that is. It wasn't happening.
And I think that's where the compusion lies. We're not asking them to do anything else. The problem was that they failed to test more than one person that should have been tested, that was flagged. That's all you're asking.
And I agree, you know?
And at the end of the day, we know it's not the employees, because we praise the employees. This was policies by higher-ups that prevented the doctor himself in charge from testing people that he said he should have tested. We're talking about the doctor in charge of the ER. We're not talking about Chief Cardona, or myself, or the judge. This is a doctor saying, we should have tested more, but because of the policies we had in place, we didn't test them. And that's what we're trying to correct. And I believe with this agreement, and this was a mutual agreement, Eddie, 30 hours or more, nonstop? I mean, at the end of the day, they're gonna test people that go. They don't have to take them in. They don't have to admit them. That's not what we want. But if no other facility is open, and they show up with symptoms, that's what we want. We want, we expect them to test them, not just send them off, and then they gotta wait two, three days to get tested. And by that time, they were positive, and they could have infected other people. And that's what we're trying to prevent. So, look, the people themselves in our community that are having gatherings and getting sick together, you know, that's something on them. But we need to make sure that when somebody goes test, whether it's UMC, hospital district, stat, or emergency room, that if they have a symptom, which what the governor himself has ordered, when he sends the National Guard, he's looking for one symptom. He wants people tested. He wants to see what percentage of the population might have it. And right now, the state is at about 5%.
I think that's a fact.
And we're at about 6%. So, this is not a knock on employees. And for anybody to think that, you know, they're highly mistaken. We praise our employees. I was there a few days prior to all this going on last week, okay? I know a lot of them. I know they're hardworking people. I know they take pride. But when you have administrative procedures... But when you have administrative procedures, not controlled by the doctor, not controlled by staff, you know, but by higher-ups, this is where this came from. And now, we're on the same page, and I'm glad to say that I'm able to talk to Eladio, and we had a good conversation twice this week already, and we're going to meet tomorrow. So we're on the same page, and we just need to make sure, if that's where they go, they should be tested.
I mean, it, it's like you say, at the end of the day, you spoke to Eladio, we have an agreement, good, everybody agrees. But there's no reason for us to keep saying, oh, well, the hospital didn't do all this test, like, that's in the past. There's no reason.
I don't think anybody's saying that, Mr. Salinas.
To keep saying that, I just, I just heard those comments about what, what they failed to do, I understand, but.
And I know it's personal, but that's okay, I mean, I mean, we're, we're trying to do the right thing.
What do you mean, personal?
By who?
It sounds like a personal thing, where I don't want people to get hurt, nobody wants anybody to get hurt. You know, that's the last thing we want for our citizens to be.
No, I'm sorry that you're taking this personal, that's absolutely not the way it is, at least not by me. By me, I had no idea that this had happened until this lady told me, and I don't think she even, her intentions were not, she just said, you know what, this is what happened to me on Sunday. And she went on to say, but I had no idea, I didn't know. I'm bringing it up, because you're saying that, that agreement, and that's fine. Again, my question too, I guess, to Mr. Morales is, you know, as a council, how are we liable? Either way, you know? And I think that's a fair question to ask.
Yeah, the answer, the answer is no, uh, Mr. Morales, we're not taking over the Fort Duncan, we're not exercising our own medical judgment. We just wanted them to apply the local health authority standards, which every other medical agency was agreeing to, to do, except, with the exception of Fort Duncan initially. And, you know, during the negotiations, it became evident that there was a disconnect between what even the staff at Fort Duncan wanted, and they wanted to be testing, and what administration was telling them based on this algorithm that they use as to whether they should test or not. And I think that disconnect is what led to people that should have been tested, they weren't. But I'm glad, as Mr. Salinas has said, we're way past that, we had that meeting, it became evident that it was necessary that our numbers were going to continue to grow, and that we were one of the communities in all of South Central Texas that was taking this very seriously, and going out there with that special task force, and following up on people that were getting tested. We've more than doubled the number of tests that we've, that we had here in Eagle Pass and Maverick County compared to Del Rio, Albeberde. And so if you see just by the raw numbers that we have, that were much higher, it's, it's, it's also because of the special efforts that the special task force and the EOC has done in following up with people that do test positive, and investigating them, following up with the people that they may have made contact with, and then asking them to also get tested. And the issue here was mostly, as Mr. Cardona was saying, on the weekend. We had UMC and the hospital district that were very effective during the week, and making sure that they handled most of the, the people that required testing. It was in the weekends when we were having, um, some issues. And then some people also that just decided, well, I should go to the hospital, I should go to the ER, that was a simple thing for them, and then they were being denied, um, you know, and, and being sent somewhere else. And we don't know if they were actually going. Now, we, we put parameters in place to have, uh, people there if they do get denied. And, and, and maybe a very valid reason, they don't show the symptoms, or this is the third time they come, we have personnel there outside of the ER that will have a desk, and they need, the patient needs to visit with them before they leave the ER, so to see if our own folks will direct them to UMC or to the hospital district. I think it's a good checks and balances that is in place.
Thank you, and, uh, also thank you to the members of the EOC for what you're doing, and I think, I can appreciate the intent of what this is all about, and like, reiterate the fact of what, uh, basically everyone's trying to say here, is I think we're all on the same page, we just need to sort of get on the same page and understand the fact that we just want to make sure that all of our citizens have access to the testing or access to the healthcare that they deserve. And without a minor, go ahead, if you, if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion, I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Davis. Second by Councilwoman Ramon. Anything else added? Just important to outline there, Chief, that we are going to have somebody that's going to be on the city payroll, right? It's going to be on the city payroll, monitoring, but Fort Duncan will be picking up the tab up to $50,000. And, and we're hoping this thing flies over within the next month, you know, hopefully into July, and, and we won't need that anymore. But in the meantime, Fort Duncan has agreed to do that, okay?
Chief, also, I want, I want to thank you for all the work that you do. And, uh, just by, by being here, and I, I know that you have a lot of knowledge, more than any one of us, about, about this, you're involved, you're our leader, so. Also, uh, for the future, it would be refreshing, because people trust you, we trust you. Even the press conferences, we could hear information from you.
Yes.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Because we have a lot of speakers, but, I mean, you're it, and we trust you, and you're very knowledgeable, so that would be what I would want to say.
I do my best in the shadows, but yes, I, I guess I can.
But you shouldn't, you shouldn't be in the shadows.
You need to be on the front line.
Trust me, we've tried to get him up, I think we got you up to at least one time, but not twice.
A couple of times, but I like to stay over there where I'm busy. But thank you, I appreciate it.
And we tell him on a weekly basis, but he hides. All right, moving on, well, we had a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. All right, moving on to executive session, item number 13. Executive session pursuant to section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney regarding legal matters related to Eagle Point Ranch LP, Robert Mayo and Rick Anderson, plaintiffs versus City of Eagle Pass Waterworks System, City of Eagle Pass and Roberto Gonzalez defendants in the District Court, 293rd Judicial District, Maverick County, Texas, and possible action in open session regarding same. Item number 14, executive session pursuant to section 551.087 of the Texas Government Code, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, regarding financial and economic development negotiations received from a private business prospect regarding a chapter 380 agreement for a project, Good Neighbor, and possible action in open session regarding same. Let the record reflect, city council went to executive session at 7:14 PM on Tuesday, May 19th. Executive session at 8:29 PM on May 19th, 2020. We will go to, going, executive session, item number 13. Executive session pursuant to section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, consultation with the attorney regarding legal matters related to Eagle Point Ranch LP, Robert Mayo and Rick Anderson, plaintiffs versus City of Eagle Pass Waterworks System, City of Eagle Pass and Roberto Gonzalez defendants in the District Court, 293rd Judicial District, Maverick County, Texas, and possible action in open session regarding same. On this item, we believe we're going to, we're not going to take action here, because we're going to go back to item number seven, take action, so this item, we don't need to take action.
We just table it?
Table, it need to be tabled, or we're just not going to take action, Eddie?
No action, no action.
Mayor, go ahead and formally take, uh, action in the form of tabling it with a motion, the second, so that there can be an official record.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Salinas to table, second by Councilwoman Ramon to table. All those in favor of tabling, please raise your right hand, unanimous. Item number 14, uh, do I got to read it even though we're not taking action on this one?
No, sir, you don't, just, uh, somebody make a motion to no action, tabling it.
Table this one also, or just no action?
Table, same.
All right, table, all right. Motion made to table by Mayor Pro Tem Davis.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Ramon. All those in favor, please raise your right hand, table, unanimous. All right, going to item seven. Discussion and possible action on a resolution of the city council of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, approving a settlement terms agreement between Eagle Point Ranch LP, Robert Mayo and Rick Anderson as plaintiffs, and the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, City of Eagle Pass Waterworks System, and Roberto Gonzalez as defendants, involving a cause of action between the plaintiffs and defendants, numbered and styled as cause number 18-12-36712-MCV. Eagle Point Ranch LP, Robert Mayo and Rick Anderson, plaintiffs versus City of Eagle Pass Waterworks System, City of Eagle Pass and Roberto Gonzalez defendants in the District Court, 293rd Judicial District, Maverick County, Texas. And on this one, Eddie, I believe, uh, there's a settlement agreement that just needs to be approved from the city as far as our part goes on this lawsuit?
Correct, mayor, council, you all heard an executive session from the TML-appointed attorney, Clarissa Rodriguez, who provided detailed information with respect to the settlement terms agreement. You've also been provided with a copy of the actual document, settlement terms agreement, uh, for your review. We discussed the detail as far as, uh, the commitment from Waterworks, City of Eagle Pass, and also from Eagle Point Ranch, and the developers in this case, and what they needed to do. And based on that information, and based on what TML, and as well as the attorneys on record that represent Waterworks, Mr. Gonzalez, and the City of Eagle Pass are recommending that you, uh, accept the, the settlement terms agreement as, as presented.
Does our motion approve? Motion made by Councilwoman Ramon, second by Councilman DiAlpando. Any further questions, discussion? If none being, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, unanimous. Moving on to last item on the agenda, adjournment.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Davis, second by Councilwoman Ramon. All those in favor of adjournment, please raise your right hand, unanimous. Meeting adjourned at 8:33 PM, May 19th.